Legitimately distraught.
Oh, that's sad.
Good evening. Welcome to the Green Local School District Board of Education Regular Meeting for January 9th. Mrs. Snowberger, oh, sorry before I start. Due to some technical difficulties, there'll be no streaming of the meeting this evening, and both organizational and the regular meeting videos will be up on the school website tomorrow. Having said that is my disclaimer. Mrs. Snowberger, which call to vote?
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Mrs. Stoinoff?
Here.
Mrs. Finelli?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Chanacki?
Here.
Would you all please rise and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will move right into the honors and recognition. Mr. Miller?
All right, so we are going to get started with our Students of the Month. Can I please have Mr. Schenk come forward? I think we have, yeah, we'll do November. We get two today, so that's great.
All right, Delaney was down in Florida in November, so we're going to recognize her in January. And just a prime example why she is a Student of the Month, she actually picked me up a sand dollar while she was in Florida and brought it back. I thought that was very thoughtful of her. But I do have Delaney Doss with me, and she is the Student of the Month for November. And she is the daughter of Katie and Tyler, who are here this evening. And she has a sister, Mila, and then also a brother named Kayden. Her favorite things to do at home are to play with her dolls. And at school, Delaney's favorite subject is math, because she just loves learning during center time. And her favorite color is purple. Her favorite food is pizza. And she feels like she is special, because she is kind and cares about others, which I couldn't agree more. When she grows up, she wants to be...
A baby doctor.
A baby doctor. So. Mrs. Flutterjohn, her classroom teacher who is here this evening, she had this to say about Delaney. "Delaney truly encompasses what it means to be Bulldog Strong. She is always prepared and ready to work. Delaney is kind and encouraging to her friends, and is always willing to lend a helping hand. She is well-liked by her teachers, her peers, and is all-around just an amazing student. Way to go, Delaney. You deserve being honored as Greenwood Student of the Month." I couldn't agree more. If you can go ahead, please put your hands together for her. All right, now on to our January's Student of the Month. And we got Weston Boyle. And he is the son of Rachel and Tyler. And he has two sisters, Paisley and Brynlee. And his favorite color is blue. Favorite food is mini meatloaf. And I've got to ask, who makes the mini meatloaf?
Mom.
Mom does. All right. And his favorite thing about school is recently learning about Native Americans. At home, he loves playing sports outside. He feels that he is special, because he is cute. So, nothing wrong with a little bit of confidence. I like it. And when he grows up, he wants to be a...
Football player.
Football player. Here's what his teacher, Mrs. Baker, has to say about Weston. Weston embodies all the characteristics that make him Bulldog Strong. Weston is safe, following the rules, both in the classroom and at recess. When someone is not being safe, he quietly and nicely reminds them of the rules. He is also kind, as he is a friend to everyone that he does meet. When someone is playing alone, Weston often will go and make sure that they're included in the group. That's great. He is also responsible when it comes in each day. He is ready to learn and is prepared for the day with his supplies. Weston completes his work and turns it in only when it is fully his best version it can be. So congratulations, Weston. You are definitely Bulldog Strong, and we're really proud of you and lucky to have you at Greenwood. If you can go ahead, please put your hands together.
All right, Mrs. Seals, Green Primary.
All right. It is my pleasure to introduce Harper Rhodes as our January Student of the Month. Harper is new to Green. She joined us from Talmage, and she is already displaying all of the Bulldog Strong behaviors of be safe, be kind, and be responsible. She's joined here this evening with Nicole and Dani, her parents, and as well as her siblings. We have Avery, who is also a first grader at Green Primary School. And then she also has Alexis, Preston, and Peyton. And Peyton is joined here this evening with us. She is in Ms. Carlson's homeroom, and when she grows up, she would like to be a professional gymnast, or explore her love for animals and be an animal shelter owner. She has a fish, a cat, and two dogs at home. She loves reading and math. Reading, because it relaxes and calms her, and she enjoys reading in bed at night before she goes to bed. Her favorite things at GPS are the teachers and all of her friends. She enjoys it more here than her last school, because she says everybody is nice and kind. She said that her favorite activities, as mentioned, are gymnastics and reading, but we also share a favorite activity, she said, was sleeping. I said I could definitely, definitely do that. She has a very interesting fact. Do you want to share it with everybody? No? All right. Are you okay with me sharing it with everybody? It's pretty cool. Her parents shared with us that she was actually born with six fingers. So, very, very cool and interesting. Her favorite and best advice to give other students that she hears every day from her family is to do your best. You can do it. You rock. She is super excited this evening to join her family at Steak 'n Shake. She said that she has never been there before, and Mom told her to celebrate. That's where they're headed. So congratulations, Harper. We're excited to have you at Green Primary School, and you're doing a great job already.
All right, Green Intermediate School, Mr. Booth.
It's a pleasure for me tonight to introduce to you Carlo Rubino, who is a sixth grader at GIS. He is on the team of Mr. Germano, Mrs. Marchek, and Mrs. Brooks Quinn. He is here tonight with Vince and Melissa, his mom and dad, and Gianna, his sister, who is 11th grader at the Green High School. When I spoke to him about school, I said, "Tell me a little about your favorite things." Science is his number one. He says his teacher makes it so much fun. He really enjoys it. He also loves math, because he's very good at it. And he's an AB student and very strong academically. Now, outside of school, he's got a lot of great things going on. He is a football, he's placed on Green Youth Football Team, and he has done that for seven years. He's the wide receiver and the free safety. His favorite thing to do, this is very interesting, he puts on football games, and he practices being the announcer for the football games. So he wants to do that also when he grows up. I asked him about his collection, collections that he has outside of school and his activities. He is a Steeler fan to the nth degree. I see some positive head shaking. Steeler memorabilia that he calls as being very important to him is best piece, he says, is a helmet from Super Bowl XL that has the signatures of the players on it. He also has started, he also has a signed photograph, I think, of you and your dad with Ben Roethlisberger. So that's another highlight. And he just loves everything about the Steelers. He also collects wrestling action figures and something called Funko Pops, which I have no idea, what is a Funko Pop? Do you know? Oh, don't know how to describe it. We'll save it for later. His future plans, says that, again, Pittsburgh being big, he would like to go to Pitt or Villanova in Philadelphia. Again, football announcer is his goal, and if that doesn't work out, he would love to go to work with his dad in his career. Something special about you, again, huge Steeler fan. His dad and I think his uncle, they like to go to all the football games with the Browns versus Steelers, and he has been to a lot of those games, which he absolutely loves spending time with his family. Something special about him, has said his knowledge of football is very, very strong. And I want to hear this announcing going on. We'll have to try that sometime. I won't put you on the spot tonight, but I got to hear that. I asked him about his heroes in his life, and he attributes the way he is as a fine young man to his dad, who taught him how to treat other people and given him manners. He also attributes his mom for teaching him how to be nice to other people. So after spending time with Carlo, you can definitely tell that he is just the kind of guy that relates well to others. We had great conversations, him and I. In fact, his teachers also say this about him. Carlo is a very kind, polite, hard-working student that is a pleasure to have in class. He is a great role model. He is kind to his peers, has a great sense of humor, and also enjoys social studies and science written by Mrs. Brooks Quinn. So we have a really fine young man, and I can tell he is just very, very respectful. Him and I really connected. He can really relate to everybody around him. So keep up the great work, Mom and Dad. He's a great young man. So let's give him a round of applause.
All right, Green Middle School, Mr. Wells.
It's my pleasure to introduce the Middle School Student of the Month, and it's Nolan Bunner. Nolan is the son of Jeff and Julie Bunner, and he's got a younger sibling, Grant, who attends GIS. He's on the team of Mr. Rutterback, Mrs. Whitmer, Ms. Canary, Mr. Klein, and Mrs. Goddard. I think I got them all. At GMS, Nolan is part of the football team, and it's something he wants to continue when he's at the high school as well. Away from school, he's a big-time baseball player. He likes the outdoor sports. He likes hunting. He likes fishing, and he enjoys spending time with his family and friends. In regards to his future plans, Nolan said he's keeping his options open, which is fine. That's a great part about being in eighth grade. No problem there. This is what his team of teachers had to say about Nolan. Nolan is hardworking and kind to his classmates. He takes learning very seriously and puts forth full effort daily. We appreciate the insight and volunteerism that Nolan brings to our classes. His input is highly valued. Great job so far this year, Nolan. Keep up the excellent work. So again, can you help us congratulate our January's Student of the Month, Nolan Bunner?
All right, Green High School, Mrs. Brown.
Our Seniors of the Month are two great examples of senior leadership, and they are Julia Foringer and Jackson Hall. Jackson is perhaps TikTok famous for his Hall in the Halls at GHS, right? And Julia is the coordinator of STEAM Dreams, right? That has done a lot of city projects. So Julia is the daughter of Trina and Jay, and she is a three-year member of our dance team, which she enjoys performing and competing in our dances. She has danced for 15 years, and she's currently on the New Focus Dance Academy Company Team. She's the president of the Science Club and a member of the National Honor Society, and she is on the Academic Challenge Team. She is also the president of future STEAM Dreams. And in her free time, she enjoys reading, painting, spending time with friends and family. What she failed to include humbly, so, is that she's also a National Merit Commended She plans to attend college and major in biochemistry and astrophysics, and one day she hopes to work for NASA and research life on other planets. So congratulations to her. Jackson Hall is the son of Carla and John. Jackson is the proud editor-in-chief of the Paw Print, which just celebrated its 35th anniversary. Besides this, he's the president of the GHS Environmental Club, the senior class treasurer, and a student council officer. He's also involved in National Honor Society and Key Club. And additionally, he attends monthly Green City Council meetings and routine meetings with Mayor Nujabauer through the Student Municipal Program. He intends to pursue a career in journalism and public relations. So let's congratulate Jackson.
All right, let's give one more round of applause for all our Students of the Month. And we're going to segue into our spotlight on staff, where we have staff that are recognized by colleagues, peers, and parents, community members, you name it. We have three great ones today, so can you please come forward? Sherri Murray, Brandon Edwards, and Amy Cambier. All right, so we're going to get started, and we'll start off with Sherri. So I had the privilege of working with Sherri, and I agree with everything I'm about to read here. She's a class act, works really, really hard to do the best for her kids, and the person that nominated her said as much, said, "Working in this district, Sherri's one of those teachers that just stands out and is absolutely amazing. She's selfless, hardworking, and always positive. She works hard to enrich our students' educational experiences through the arts, and the impact that she has on students each and every year is just awe-inspiring." I thought this was a neat quote from one of her colleagues. "You've always been a rock star of a teacher, a manner, and better person. Your modesty always continues to inspire others, and they are very, very happy that you get to get recognized. Very, very well deserved. So awesome job, Mrs. Murray." And next to her is Amy, who is an educational aide in charge of the Digital Literacy Program, which teaches essential technology skills to our youngest students. But she is a lot more than that. The individual that nominated her said she is an absolute amazing staff member at the primary school who goes above and beyond her daily responsibilities every single day for the kids. She is a leader in the building, who's an integral part of a variety of initiatives and committees, including the Bulldog Dash Committee and the Bulldog Leadership Team. She's always happy to help out whenever anything is needed, never hesitates to jump into any situation, and has a positive attitude, and the GPS kids absolutely love her. She is appreciated for everything she does for the staff, students, and school. Just does a phenomenal job. Thank you, Amy. Let's give her a round of applause. And Brandon, last but not least, I see he has a fan club out here with some of his colleagues. So Brandon was hired as a high school custodian in the summer of 2017 from one of his colleagues. Simply put, Brandon displays all the attributes you would want in any employee. Great attendance, hard work, and agreeable nature are his trademarks. He's always willing to help out, whether it's specific to his job or not, you can count on him. As you can tell, like I said, from his fan club, he's earned the friendship and respect of those that he works with. And they're all very proud of him. In his five-and-a-half years at Green High School, he has grown from a shy kid with a lot to learn, I didn't write this, into a confident young man who others turn for answers and assistance. And it's just been so satisfying watching his development over the years, and he's an excellent staff member. So thank you for all that you do, Brandon. Well done.
All right, how about one more round of applause for everyone this evening? Thank you all for coming. We'll take, give you a moment. If you don't want to stay for the remainder of the meeting, you can collect your stuff, and we'll give you a few moments just to make your way out, unless you want to stay.
It's really fun.
It's super good time.
In so many ways.
Just go sit down.
Item number four, the approval of the agenda. I do not believe there's any addendum items. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoinoff.
Second.
Mrs. Finelli. Mrs. Snowberger.
Mrs. Stoinoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Chanacki?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. There's no need for executive session at this time. Recognition of visitors and anybody else that's left? No. We recognize that you're still here. That's about it. We'll move forward with the superintendent and treasurer report.
All right, so January is Board Appreciation Month. I'm glad we have a full house to recognize these great people. So it's one of the things that really, I know Edie and I celebrate them, and so many do throughout the year, but it's nice to have a specific month for them. So this is a proclamation from the state of Ohio. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but there are some things that I know we think about often that I feel like they need to be recognized for. So obviously, to be elected officials, they're responsible for an awful lot of responsibility. They devote hours and hours of their time each and every week to provide leadership and guidance to the schools on a variety of topics. They fill an important role. They monitor and are involved in everything, and I can tell you, this group certainly is involved in each and every aspect. They fill the communication aspect with different segments, and especially as we've had challenging topics throughout the years, they do a great job with that. And in terms of our students, each and every decision, there's a ton of thought and energy into what is best for our kids. So I know Edie and I could go on and on about how grateful we are to work with the board. It was really neat. We had our teachers signed a school board appreciation card that everybody got, and that was from the Green Primary. And I just can't thank you guys enough for the job you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it? No, I'm not done that. Do you have anything else for the report?
Sorry, for Edie to follow that report.
Ditto.
Ah, I knew that was going to not work out very well. That's it. A lot of eight minutes for that. I think I speak on behalf of all my colleagues who say, you know, it's, we do our role, and basically, I think our biggest role is just to keep out of your guys' way. And you guys have shown, you and your team, that this is, that the potential for Green is, the sky's the limit, really. And I think we've really seen that. Last several years, the community reflects that, and I think as a whole, we're a pretty darn good team. So we appreciate it as well. Moving on for the approval of the minutes, do I have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes for November 21st, 2022?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Chanacki.
Second.
And Mr. Cohen. Mrs. Snowberger?
Mr. Chanacki?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoinoff?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. For your financial report, the superintendent and treasurer recommend the Board of Education approve the financial statement and payment of bills from November 2022 and December of 2022. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoinoff.
Second.
Mrs. Finelli. Mrs. Snowberger?
Mrs. Stoinoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Chanacki?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Item B, the superintendent and treasurer recommend the Board of Education approve the following. Basically, it's the resolution to place our One Mill Safety and Security Levy renewal on the ballot in May, I believe, right? And it tells us what all is there and what the levy's going to be. It's first passed in August 7th, 2018, and we are here already to renew that. It provides, just in a nutshell, obviously, it provides SROs in every building. It certainly provides, we've purchased equipment along the way for upgrades for our vestibules, equipment of checking IDs in front, I mean, just a myriad of things that Mr. Jackson and his team has really, I think, and Mrs. McMahon, in terms of levies and grants and that kind of stuff, to enhance our security, safety, and security measures throughout the district. And I think, I truly believe it's one of those where it is a, we get a lot of bang for the buck out of this. And also, you know, the city and community benefit from it by providing additional summer patrols also throughout the summer, or when school's not in session through the Summit County Sheriff's Office. So it does a lot, along with our, sorry, along with our family's support folks that really are reaching out and making a lot of, a lot of great inroads to people that, you know, that just, that could use that kind of support. So it does a lot, and we really appreciate the community with it. When we first asked for it, they voted for it overwhelmingly, and we hope they see the value in it and do the same for the renewal in May. Do I have a motion to approve the first reading?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoinoff. Questions or comments?
That was me.
Oh, did I say Mrs. Stoinoff?
Oh, I thought you said Mrs. Finelli.
Oh.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoinoff.
Mrs. Snowberger?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoinoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Chanacki?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Item C, the superintendent and treasurer recommend the Board of Education approve the following athletic donations. $500 from Rustina Bronick for the boys' basketball, $500 for James Swiker for swimming, $500 Stacy Swiker for boys' swimming, and $5,000 from Brian Reed for the high school girls' soccer. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Chanacki.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Questions or comments? Mrs. Snowberger?
Mr. Chanacki?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoinoff?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Under new business, consent calendar note. Items under the consent calendar considered routine and being acted under one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the board votes, unless a board member requests an item be clarified or even removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoinoff.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Finelli. Mrs. Snowberger?
Mrs. Stoinoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Chanacki?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Item B, the superintendent and treasurer recommend the Board of Education approve the Green High School Curriculum Guide for the 2324 school year. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoinoff. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I've asked Mrs. Brown just to come up, just give a couple minutes of what's new and maybe different at Green High School for next year. So here she is.
So luckily, there's not a whole lot new in the curriculum guide, other than a couple of things. First of all, the state of Ohio has made a half-credit course of financial literacy a graduation requirement for all Ohio grads. And some of our fellow high schools are kind of scrambling to figure that out, but luckily, we've done that for the past 12 years, and so it's just old news to us. But that is, now it has to be in course form. It used to be able to be embedded, now they're actually having, asking that we have a course, which we do. Another update is that the instrumental music department will be offering Honors Band and Honors Choir. And what that means is that in addition to taking the typical course, those who choose to take honors will be completing extra exercises, playing leadership-type items, and also other projects. And those projects will be developed with increasing difficulty as they move through their high school career. So we will be offering that. The Language Arts Department has decided to offer some new electives and also bring back some old electives that we've had in the past. We are bringing back creative writing. We haven't had that in probably... We are bringing back creative writing. We haven't had that in probably 10 years. We are bringing back fundamentals of speech, but we're now calling it public speaking. We also have a new course on mindfulness and another course on true detective and true crime and detective literature. And those are just some attempts to offer some relevant to teenagers courses, but they're also just half-credit courses. And all of our electives in the language arts department, with the exception of journalism, study of film, and the yearbook, will be offered as half-year, half-credit courses. In doing that, we can actually offer the course to more students because you can actually fit in two sections of that course in one period. So it gives more opportunity for the kids to get in there and get some electives, which we just need a little bit of a refresher. And the true crime, that is just a huge hit. It will include podcasts as well as reading and some other updates, so we're excited about that. Any questions?
Sounds great.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Mrs. Snowberger?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoinoff?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Chanacki?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Item C, the superintendent and treasurer recommend the Board of Education approve the 2324 academic calendar. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chanacki and Mrs. Stoinoff. Questions or comments?
Just real quickly, I'm just gonna kind of hit some of the highlights. I know one of the questions I get from the students is when do schools start so they can gauge their summer plans. Next school year, we will be starting August 22nd. That's the Tuesday. Spring break is the last week of March, which it traditionally has been. And then the last day of school is the 30th of May. So those, obviously, it'll be on the website. You can take a look at it. I know people will need to plan for vacations and different things. And just as kind of a disclaimer, I'll say it now, obviously, as we move forward with our building projects, we need to maximize the length and duration of summers down the road so we can have as much time for our building projects as possible. So this is a pretty typical-looking calendar, and moving forward in the future years, it may look a little bit different, but we'll do our best to try to keep the consistency and still make sure those buildings move quickly as they can. So thank you.
Questions or comments? Mrs. Snowberger?
Mr. Chanacki?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoinoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Item D, the superintendent and treasurer recommend the Board of Education approve the Green Local Schools and the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission's third and restated expedited local partnership programs project agreement. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
You don't want to hear that again.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoinoff. Questions or comments? Or you want to just say what that is?
Yeah. I just don't want to have to repeat what Mr. Campbell just read.
Actually, this agenda item and the next, at the end of each calendar year, the OFCC and the state go through what they call a debt ratio ceiling. They need to know the exact dollars that are on the books. Because of the bond sale in November, we actually collected dollars that went into our bond fund and to the COPS agreement that we approved earlier. And so as those are restated, they're actually reported to the state. And in order for the master plan to be approved each year, those things have to be recorded. And their meeting is on January 18th or 19th. I'm sorry, I'm not sure which one. And they needed this approved. Nothing has changed. The master plan is the same. The split, the 75 for the community and the 25 from the state is the same. This is just going to be an annual thing until the building's actually open, so.
Okay. You call the roll, please.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoinoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Chanacki?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Item E, the superintendent and treasurer recommend the Board of Education approve the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission's second amended master facility plan. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoinoff.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chanacki. Any follow-up on that?
The only thing I'll add is, obviously, with a project like this, there's a very stringent process, so this is the next steps. There's a lot of checkpoints along the way, so this is a checkpoint to make sure that what we envision coming out with the master plan is still the same today. So they check everything to make sure not only we're in agreement with it at the local, but also the Ohio Facilities Commission needs to make sure that they see that the plan is where it has been. So like Mrs. Snowberger said, there's not any changes. It's just reassuring that we're still on the same path that we've been on.
Mrs. Snowberger?
Mrs. Stoinoff?
Yes.
Mr. Chanacki?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. I don't see any visitors or public participation, so board commendations. Mr. Chanacki, we'll start with you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Just a few things today. Wanted to give a hats off. It's Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. So I noticed that on our Facebook page. We had a nice blurb about our student resource officers and the important vital role that they play in all of our schools. I think anyone that has, you know, I'm not in, you know, I'm not, not in the buildings every day, but get to see the, see the SROs firsthand when they're helping guide students in and out, and buses in and out, and all that good stuff. And obviously, the presence that they have in the buildings to just make the kids feel comfortable and feel confident in their interactions, I think, just goes such a long way. So really appreciate the partnership that we have with Summit County Sheriff Department. And it's really nice to hear the first reading of the safety security levy today, so to get that, you know, on the, you know, on the ballot here, coming up here soon. So just want to thank them for what they do every day for our students and for our staff. I think it means a lot and it goes a long way. The Green sports teams are on a roll. Keep reading about the girls' bowling team, about the boys' basketball, the girls' basketball, swimming, just a lot of really, really good things going on in the district with our, with our sporting team. So hats off to those coaches and those administrators and those players who are putting in the effort while balancing the workload of being a student as well. So I really appreciate that. And then just, you know, very thankful to see some familiar faces here in the signing of this Happy School Board Appreciation Month from the staff. I think that's really, really neat. And, you know, a lot of these folks on here hold a special place in, in mine and my family's heart because, you know, both of our boys have gone through, gone through those doors. So really cool to see that. It's just, it's such an honor and a privilege, honor and a privilege to be able to serve the district in this capacity. And, you know, just thankful, like Mr. Campbell said earlier, for the administration and leadership that we have in the district. It makes, it makes our roles a lot more enjoyable to have a, the relationship and holding each other accountable and making sure that we're doing what's best for our students, for our staff. So short and sweet, I hope, but that's all that I have tonight, Mr. Campbell.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chanacki. Mrs. Stoinoff?
Oh, well, Mr. Chanacki stole. Not half of mine, but we'll see what we can do. I would also like to, to recognize National Law Enforcement Day. We are privileged to have such a wonderful relationship with the Summit County Sheriff's Office and be able to call on them whenever we need anything, and they're in our buildings daily, building relationships with our students, which is one of the things that I think is so special about having them in there, is they, they do interact with our students. And I think it serves especially our younger students to have that positive relationship with law enforcement. So as they grow older, if they see things, because we always tell them, you know, see something, say something, they are more comfortable stepping up and doing that. So again, thank you to our SROs and the entirety of the Summit County Sheriff's Office for being a partner with us. Also, wanted to point out the plaques that you saw. Our individuals who were here for spotlight on staff holding tonight were crafted by our own GHS arts club, so I think that is really cool. Mrs. Murray is an art teacher, so fitting that she received one of those plaques this evening. The last thing I wanted to just say is like a quick PSA. I think we all have seen this week, the value of knowing CPR. And Julie's here as a Bills fan, and so I thought I would mention that. If you have the opportunity to go out and get trained in CPR, you should do it. And I'm going to get retrained because the last time I had that training, Green Intermediate School was Green High School. So it's been a while. And the procedures have changed for what you are supposed to do for CPR. And getting trained to be comfortable with an AED is also really important. Because the difference was that there were, on the field at that Bills game, people who knew how to do that. And I think the other thing to understand is what you see on TV, that being a different situation, when you're watching ER, if you're old enough to remember ER, or New Amsterdam, or whatever you're watching, the process of administering CPR is not what you see on TV. And it's, it can be a little traumatic for the person who is administering that. And so I think training is key because when you're in that situation, you need that training to kick in, especially, unfortunately, a lot of individuals end up performing CPR on their relatives. And so, again, a very traumatic situation. In this case, with, Damar Hanlon has been released from the hospital today and is going to a care facility in Buffalo. And I don't know, was it today? He's going, okay, I thought it was today. Maybe I just saw the headline he was going to be. And again, the difference between what could have been a tragedy and what is a medical miracle is the fact that someone knew how to properly perform CPR. So that's my PSA of the day. If you have a chance to get certified, please do it because you could save a life. With that, then I will turn it back to Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoinoff. Very well said. Mrs. Finelli?
Well, I, I ditto what Katie said, especially about, if you can learn CPR, please, please do that. That's about, I don't have too much, anybody else, but.
It's been a quiet month. We've all been at home doing holidays.
Yes, doing holiday stuff. You all had a nice holiday.
Thank you, Mrs. Finelli. Mr. Cohen?
Sally, I got enough for the both of us.
Okay.
First of all, I just want to mention that not only do you remember ER, but you probably don't remember MASH.
I do remember MASH.
I remember MASH.
That was one of my favorite shows growing up. Really? You're old enough for that?
I'm going to be 47 years old.
Wow.
Thank you for making me tell the whole world that today, just to prove I remembered MASH.
Sure, no problem. I do want to mention that each building and the cab, I believe, now is equipped with AED and that we have staff, you know, that's been trained on using that for professional, in their professional development days, so that's outstanding. I do want to mention a couple things. First of all, shout out to the GHS Key Club for assisting the Beds Brigade organization with the local church, building beds to donate to those families in need in our community. And a special thanks to the advisor, Sean Edwards, for his leadership of Key Club. Earlier this week, the GHS musical theater students had a fantastic semester finale with the snowy showcase. And I was there, got to witness it. It was a great group. It was one last chance for those kids and the behind-the-scenes kids that were part of the Little Mermaid to get together one last time and perform, and there was a nice banquet. And shout out to Katrina Hockla, who did a fantastic job with the group, and of course, Scott Plummer, making sure that the auditorium was, was running efficiently as always. Mr. Chanacki already mentioned the girls' bowling team, but I believe that they're undefeated. Is that correct?
Yes.
And I heard the coach is really awesome. So that's the rumor going around. And I also heard the basketball team, the girls' basketball team is undefeated in federal league play as well, so that's outstanding. I did want to show this. This is the 2023 Safety Kids Calendar. And I believe one of the people we honored tonight, Sherry Murray, was very helpful in making sure that a few of our kids were involved and showcased in this calendar. And finally, I wanted to say, you know, School Board Appreciation Month is great, you know, but I always feel a little bit guilty because what we do is just a very tiny percentage of what really happens in this district. And we're extremely fortunate by the amazing administrators and staff and teachers that we have in this district. And it's, you know, we should be honoring you. And it's just a privilege, every single, you know, every single year that I serve on this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. On a, on a sad note, Mike Curry, a middle school math teacher, has, you know, recently lost his battle with health issues and passed away a couple.
Over the holidays.
Over the holidays, yeah. And I think he was one of those that was very highly regarded and was, will certainly be missed, but condolences to, to his family. And just to kind of tag team what Katie was saying with the Damar Hanlon thing, you know, it's, it certainly was a tragedy that turned into a victory because it, and it wasn't, you know, it was, it wasn't just like a happenstance or anything. And I think that it was the initial trainer that went out and immediately started performing CPR with them. And it was interesting, you know, some of the things that that young man has posted over the last 24 hours, you know, once he kind of came back in terms of, you know, all the, you know, we all turn the news on and we all hear whatever it is, you know, which side is, is doing this to that and everything else. And when you look at that outreach from the Cincinnati community, Buffalo community, and communities everywhere, really, you know, what was really amazing was that, you know, he started that foundation for, for toys, right, for a GoFundMe or whatever. I think it was a GoFundMe account, and his goal was $2,500. I think it was over eight million. And it was, it was probably over, I think it was over $2 million that night, almost that night. And, you know, it's just, it's just amazing. And, and, you know, and the young man is, is, is thanking people for, you know, everything. And he, I think he apologized to his teammates, from what I heard on a, on a text before the game, for putting them through all that kind of stuff. And, you know, it's just amazing. And I think it's just, it kind of shows us, if we can kind of set some things aside, just kind of let the, just let the good part shine through, it's, it really still is an amazing place. So, you know, it's, it's, it's great to be back in school. I, you know, I'm, it's easy for me to say, sit here on the board and everything, but, but, you know, truly, as, as you watch, you know, different kids, you know, like the young man from the custodian, you know, the custodian group that came through, and, and there was a lot of pride, you know, a lot of pride in him, and I think a lot of pride in, in the support that, you know, his support team came out and thought, I mean, I think that's just, it's awesome and it's a great reflection of, of kind of what we have going here in Green. So like Mr. Cohen and the rest of my colleagues said, it truly is a privilege and an honor to serve as part of the board. And, you know, we thank you for the recognition, but certainly know that it's not, that you guys are doing all the heavy lifting. And like I said, our, our best bet is just to get the heck out of the way, so. And I try to do that. I'll try to do that better, Mrs. Snowberger, this year, I promise. I promise. Just a, just a speed bump, just a speed bump.
Good luck, Pat.
And not, yeah, not the stop stick, so. I apologize for that in advance.
Ooh, I missed the recording.
And with that, we, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoinoff.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Snow, Mrs. Snowberger?
Mrs. Stoinoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Chanacki?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. See you January 23rd.